Jackie, we've got roll call. Roll call's good. Move to adopt the agenda with corrections of the, uh, May 12th, line three, and public input line five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Fred Zog. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Move on to approval of May 12th, 2020 council, and May 18th, May 21st, May 28th, 2020 special council meetings.
So moved.
Moved by Barrington, seconded by Herter. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried ten zero. Need an authorization to pay bills?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I move we pay bills in amount of $710,039.40.
Motion been made by Morak, seconded by Herter, to authorize the paid bills in the amount of Please cast your ballots. Motion passed, ten zero. Any public comment? Yes?
Ellen, can I be of President of Public Works ATV Club? Um, I just would like to get the input from the council and, and kind of review the situation we've been in, in discussions in Public Works Committee, and I know there'll be a report. We've had numerous discussions, we've had almost thirty discussions with city officials and administrators, we've had, um, nu- numerous articles in the newspaper that have been done on this subject. In fact, the subject began in June of 2019. And we've been in lots of conversations with Economic Development Committee, et cetera. And actually, what I've enjoyed about the whole process is getting to know the city council members, getting to know a little bit of how the government works here in New London. What we would like, though, is to have city councils follow up on perhaps what could be done, um, in trying to get a review of this in Public Works Committee. There was a motion in February, February of this year, and I, of course, since then, there's been dramatic changes, um, in the life for everyone, but there was a motion at that time to draft a proposed ordinance to, uh, allow the use of ATVs and UTVs on the city streets of New London. Um, we have not seen yet, uh, an example of that, and, um, the meeting last week was probably a little less than beneficial because it was, again, a, a reiteration of many arguments which we've heard. And I, I would just like to, um, find out whether that discussion could go a little bit further because a lot of the arguments up to this point are not generally specific to ATVs, UTVs, and we totally agree that there are issues that we would be concerned about, and those issues are noise, we would be concerned about that, we are also concerned about safety, we're concerned about traffic, we're, we're concerned about the same things that everyone here in New London is concerned about. But we'd like to find a way that that could be done, that we could participate in a recreational activity here in New London that we believe would be beneficial to the city. It came to my attention just recently in reading through the law concerning ATVs, UTVs, that the wording for a city is very different than for a township, and the, the wording is an authorization to use the roadways, and it's not a designation of the roadways as routes per se. And so I think we need to revisit a little bit, in fact, um, we would propose a different ATV, um, ordinance based on, on that information. But like any project, we've looked at the cost, and we believe that the cost to the city will be virtually no- nothing. Uh, we're willing to participate, and other people have committed themselves to participate in any cost per signage. We believe that the benefits are extensive, including, uh, promoting family-oriented activities, um, promoting health, promoting recreation, um, increased, um, activities and, and, and benefit to businesses here in New London. And there are, of course, risks, but we believe that those risks are less than are feared, and I think statistical data has, has been presented to indicate that. And we would just hope that a reevaluation of those costs, benefits, and risks can get done within the framework of the Public Works Committee. So we're just asking that city council would follow up, um, or give us some further direction on where we could go from here.
Thank you. Any further public input?
Yeah, I have a question. My name is DJ Moss. Two of the city employees have yet to be, um, directed why they've been suspended. Uh, they've reached out to the city attorney with no response, and we're trying to figure out what's going on, why isn't there not any communication?
Thank you. We will, um, we'll discuss that further. Thank you. Any other public input? With none, we'll be moving on to standing and special committees. Start with the Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works. Met four thirty. First item was wastewater treatment facility update. We listened to what's going on there, there's work being done, also what has to be done in order to meet our requirements from the DNR. One of the first things we have to do is adopt the two nine, 2019 CMAR, which is Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, has to be sent to the DNR. Mr. Gruel filled that out, we came back with an a reading. Resolution is required to accept the proposal that will be brought to council tonight. The next item brought up was to approve an ordinance adding thirteen point four, substation four E, adding a sewer user fee for high-strength waste collection. The new high-strength receiving station system at the wastewater treatment plant will be in operation soon. Ben Gruel explained that he has contract, contacted other local treatment facilities to inquire what they are charging for high-strength waste, and it appears to be a common charge of around thirty dollars per one thousand gallons. An ordinance was presented to the fee, was voted on, recommend to council, that will be brought up tonight for the first of two readings. The next item brought up was discussion and re-approval of survey engineering for Mill Street, Beacon Street. Out of Gamy County, Highway Department is looking at repaving what they call Highway D, our Mill Street and Beacon Avenue in 2022. Chad Hirth presented a proposal from McMahon Associates Incorporated for survey and engineering services for anticipated sanitary sewer, storm sewer replacements before the road is replaced. Better estimates for this project will be determined once the survey and evaluation work is completed. Basically, Mill Street will be milled and overlaid from Grove Street to Beacon Avenue. Beacon Avenue will be milled and overlaid from Mill Street to Division. That was motion made, that will be brought to council tonight. We updated a request to create ATV safe ordinance. Discussion took place between board members with input from the public regarding ATV usage on city streets. Chief Slieder explained concerns and the discussion he has had with the DNR and stated he is waiting on legal options before making any recommendations. That's why this has taken a little time. We're waiting for DNR and some of this other stuff to give us their recommendations, what we really can do and cannot do. The next item was consider sending a letter of support to Opaque County Highway Commissioner requesting to reduce the speed limit on Highway X, which is Wolf River Avenue, to twenty-five miles an hour from the western city limits to Ashgosh Street. Chairman Bisaw has had a conversation with Opaque County requesting to reduce the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five from Riverside Park Launch to Ashgosh Street. Casey Byersdorf of the Opaque County Highway Commissioner has requested a letter from the city supporting the action, was moved and seconded and carried to bring that to council tonight. The next item was to remove, review bid tab and recommend to council to award the brush tub grinding contract to DTAK LLC. Received three bids for this brush grinding. This is, all the brush and stuff we had in that last storm is piling up in huge piles, we have to do something with it. Basically, we had three bids, they ranged from fifty-five thousand to just over thirty-one thousand. We looked at the lowest bid. There's two piles that should be reimbursed by a grant, so that'll help us a little bit. That'll be brought to council tonight. The director's memo was included in the agenda page, project, and reviewed by the committee. Jared Garvins, wastewater treatment operator, completed six years of service on May thirtieth. Our next meeting's agenda is next month, there's a request for additional street light at the intersection of Dickinson and Pine Streets, we'll be looking at ATV once again. So I have, I motion that we will adopt the two thou- two thousand nineteen CMAR resolution.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Who seconded out there? Dennis?
Laurie.
To approve the 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report Resolution? All in favor, cast your ballots.
Aye.
Please cast your ballots.
Tom.
Approved unanimously. Motion passed.
Next, I move to approve an ordinance adding thirteen point one four four E, adding a user fee for high-strength waste collection, thirty dollars per one hundred gallons.
Second.
Do we, before we move, do we have, um, a list of people waiting to dump high-strength here?
I believe he does.
He does? Okay, I was just curious.
There are companies and individuals that, um, are interested in this.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Motion been made and seconded by Zog. Any further discussion? If not, cast your ballots, please. Motion carried, ten zero.
The next, I move to accept the survey engineering form for Mill Street, Mill and Overlay, which is gonna happen in 2022.
Second. Motion been made and seconded by Zog. Any further discussion?
It's coming from McMahon and Associates.
Approve in agreement with McMahon Associates, Inc., for engineering and survey work for the Mill Street, Beacon Avenue. It's been seconded by Zog, all in, cast your ballots, please. Motion passed, ten zero.
Next, I move we consider sending a letter of support to Opaque County Highway Commissioner requesting to reduce the speed limit on Highway X, which is Wolf River Avenue, to twenty-five miles an hour from the city, western city limits to Ashgosh Street.
I can make a comment on that, I'm in the Highway Committee for the county, it's on the agenda for our Thursday meeting, so Casey will look forward to your letter, Mike.
All right. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Herter, to approve of a letter to the Opaque County Highway Commissioner requesting the reduction of speed from thirty-five miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour on Highway X, from the western city limits to Ashgosh Street. Further discussion, cast your ballots. All in favor? Motion passed.
Next, I move to re-accept the bid tab from DTAK LLC, or bring in a brush tub grinding unit to get rid of all our excessive brush and tone. That bill is roughly thirty-one thousand, it can go up a little bit because the pile, one pile at Hatton, they bid on what was there, and they bid us a price for footage, so if it goes up and down, they had the lowest bid on every single item on there.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to award the brush tub grinding contract to lowest bidder submitted by DTAC LLC. Cast your ballots, please.
Did a good work.
Motion passed, ten zero.
And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Move on to finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, June third, at four thirty PM in the council chambers. Steve Thompson, Utilities Manager, spoke about the effect of the COVID with regards to billing and ability of utilities to collect past due payments. The Utility Commission is seeking to borrow five hundred thousand to maintain their cash flow in the event of larger customers not paying their bills. They also are looking to open a line of credit for one million dollars with no current intent to use it, but to have it available if needed. These loans both need council approval. Motion by Fache, seconded by Barrington, to recommend council approval of the loan for five hundred thousand in the one million dollar line of credit. Motion carried eight zero. Jamie Evers, um, excuse me, Jamie Evans was the one new election official at the April election and needs council approval to continue to serve as a worker. Motion by Zog, seconded by Barrington, to recommend the council approval of Jamie Evans for election official, motion carried eight zero. The yearly liquor license applicants and beverage operator license list were reviewed. Clerk, uh, Byer confirmed the police department did approve the applicants, so a motion was made by O'Connell, seconded by Fache, to recommend to council approval of the yearly license list, motion carried eight zero. The COVID nineteen business relief grant proposal was discussed. It would use economic development funds that are currently for facade renovations for city businesses. Hirth stated there have been a couple of applications for these funds recently. Would that money be available through our, our more ask? Mark state wants that money is used, is gone till the next year. There is twenty thousand available for the grants, the relief grant will be for small businesses that had to close due to the pandemic, and will be for certain expenses to help them make it through. Motion by Zog, seconded by Fache, to recommend council approval of the COVID nineteen business relief grant program. Motion carried seven one with O'Connell opposing. In order to keep the city moving forward with economic development, Mark suggests the city hire April Kapitsky from the chamber to attend the meetings that normally the city administrator would attend. Recommend the payment of thirty dollars per diem and mileage for compensation. The pay would go to the chamber. Motion by Zog, seconded by Dorsey, to recommend council approval of hiring April Kapitsky to attend meetings for economic development for the city with payment of the per diem and mileage. Motion carried eight zero. The members, the payment of members of subcommittees was discussed. This would require an ordinance revision, so the clerk was asked to draft that change for the July finance meeting. The recruitment of a new city administrator was discussed. The company used to recruit the previous administrator will be called to recruit applicants. The subcommittee was discussed, they will meet when there is further information. Changes to the charter ordinance for the city administrator position was discussed, along with criteria for appointment to that position. The ad hoc committee was discussed, the need for more people on the committee was discussed in the event of one person holding several positions named to the committee. The addition of at least five people consisting of chair or vice chair of departments, when one person chairs more than one of the committees, to be added to the current code. The description of city administrator job duties will be separated from the charter ordinance, creating the job, uh, city administrative position. Motion by Zog, seconded by Fache, to recommend the first reading of a change to the ordinance describing the makeup of the ad hoc committees beyond the June council agenda. Motion carried eight zero. Mark suggests the committee consider change to organization and structure of the city. Example given was to have the county model where department heads report to their committees. The mayor and city administrator would be charged with developing the new job descriptions. The subcommittee would meet after the job descriptions have been revised by the mayor and interim city administrator, Hirth. They will be on the July finance agenda. Discussion regarding the changes to the scab, job descriptions be done by the mayor and Hirth, with input from the department heads that hold these positions. Was suggested administrative assistant position be looked at as well. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at five twenty-five PM. The next regularly scheduled finance meeting will be held in the council chambers on July eighth at four thirty PM. Then, a special meeting, a special finance personnel meeting was held on Thursday, May twenty-first at six PM in the council chambers. Chad Hirth spoke about the proposals received for the building inspector. He recommended the Kunkel proposal, as they were the only one offering zoning administration assistance. Motion by Zog, seconded by Pinch, to recommend council approve, approval of the contract with Kunkel Engineering Group, KEG. Motion carried nine zero. Mayor, uh, Herter recommended the compensation for interim city administrator position would be one thousand per month increase to pay. Motion by Zog, seconded by Pinch, to approve the bonus pay, motion carried nine zero. Public attendees asked why other job titles were listed on agenda as action items. The mayor stated that they were there so they could be acted on if there were any proposals for the positions. There were no proposals, so no action would be taken. Questions regarding the disposition of the employees in those positions took place. The mayor stated he was unable to discuss anything in detail, as it was a personnel matter. He stated legal, legal council advised the mayor and council to not speak about it. There was discussion regarding the interim city minister, city administrator position being filled by Chad Hirth. Hirth asserted he'll be out with duties as they arise, stating he will not be able to do all the duties of the position. A motion by Pinch, seconded by Dorsey, to recommend the council approval of Chad Hirth for the interim city administrator. Motion carried nine zero. There being no other business, the meeting adjourned at six twelve PM. Then, I move we approve, uh, the, the New London Utilities securing a loan for five hundred thousand and a one million dollar line of credit.
Second.
Motion been made, and seconded by Barrington, discussion?
How long is that line of credit for?
Line of credit's for one year, Tom. It's a five hundred dollar your fee to do it, and then you only pay interest based on taking any money out.
On what you use?
Yeah. And then you have to have a plan to pay that back. If we would borrow on a, on a billion dollar loan, we would look at long-term financing to replace it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve of New London Utilities securing a loan for five hundred thousand and a one million dollar line of credit. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes nine to one.
Then I move we approve Jamie Evans as, as new le- uh, election official.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Barrington. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Oh, please cast your ballots now. You're seeing, Tom.
And John.
Tom?
Waiting on you, Tom.
Tom.
Thank you. Motion passed, ten zero.
Then I move we approve the COVID nineteen business relief grant program.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Fache, to approve the COVID nineteen business relief grant program. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carries ten zero.
Then I move we approve hiring April Kapitsky to attend meetings for the economic development for the city with payments of thirty dollars per diem and mileage.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Dorsey. To approve hiring April Kapitsky to attend meetings for economic development for the city with payment of the thirty dollar per diem and mileage. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carries ten zero.
Then I move we approve the revision to the charter ordinance for city administrator, this is the first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Zog.
And then I have, uh, recommended change, as long as we're cleaning up the ordinance, uh, just the wording for the ad hoc committee should read consisting of the finance and personnel chairman. The finance and personnel committee is one committee, so the finance and personnel chairman. And then the economic development chairman, we don't have an economic development board, so, but we do have an economic development chairman, so economic development chairman, council president would be added, and the mayor.
So you want that in line six?
Uh, you're, following word says right now, ad hoc committee. I would change the wording to say consisting of the finance and personnel chairman, public works chairman, parks and rec chairman, economic development chairman, council president, and mayor.
So you want that in your motion in line six?
Yes.
Is that an amendment?
Yes.
Dave? Are, is, you're gonna add the vice chairman if some, do we keep it at five?
Oh, and the vice chairman, yes, I'm sorry.
Or vice chairman, so it keeps that.
And or, yeah.
That's in case more than, one holds more than three positions.
Which unfortunately I do.
Right, we wanted to keep the committee at five people.
Right, right.
Sorry to butt in, Dave.
No, thank you, Mike, for that.
Did all that? Can you read that back?
So the motion is going to be, you want to amend that to say the ad hoc committee will consist of the chair and or vice chair?
Yes.
Of each of those committees?
Yes.
In the event that the chairman is, um, holds multiple chairs, positions.
That's correct.
So we added at the beginning of that line, I believe, Dave, we added at, um, that economic development meeting, that it should state, um, to consist of at least five members.
Right, 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 right. That, that would also be in there.
Those positions.
Yep, yep. We also adding their council president should also be added in there, Jackie.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna ask you to read that one more time, so it's clear to everybody before we vote on it.
So it would be the ad hoc, uh, committee, uh, well, Jackie maybe should read that, what she has there.
Do you, do you have?
Should consist of at least five members.
Right. Consisting of the chairman and or vice chair?
Yes.
Of the finance and personnel committee, public works, parks and rec, economic development committees, council president, and mayor.
Motion's been made, we have second. Fred Zog, second. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes ten zero.
Then I move we approve that your license list is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Barrington. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Please cast your ballots. Bob?
Sleepy.
Thank you, sir. Motion passes nine to one.
And that's all I have for finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Move on to park and recs with Mr. Beesaw.
Park and rec meeting met on Tuesday, June 2nd. Meeting was called order at 4:45, agenda was approved, motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Review and recommend to council changes to New London COVID-19 recreational facility programs and special events reopening plan. At the May 21st Special Parks Recreation Committee meeting, the committee approved a reopening plan for recreational facilities and services in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The committee requested to revisit the plan at the next regular committee meeting. Discussion took place about modifying the restrictions for baseball and softball games in city parks and defining who will review the timeline to modify the restriction, restriction date for special events. Motion was moved and approved, recommended changes to the plan to allow single youth sport, sporting games to be played July 1st, 2020, with the requirement to follow any current county health orders imposed at that time. The motion was carried by all. That'll be brought to council. Council considered extending the special events cancellation date in the plan to July 15th. Motion was carried by all. Recommended that council authorize the park, mayor, park and rec committee chairman, chief of police, and public service director to collectively determine future special event cancellation dates in the plan. Motion was carried by all. Discussion of the city's use of the Ignite Facility, the Old True Value Building in the Wolf River Plaza. The Old True Value Building has new owners, has indicated to staff their plan to actively market the space for a market rate rent. Parks and Recreation Department currently uses the building space for gymnastics and tumbling classes and pays a monthly rent of $267, which is below market rate. When the new owners secure a new tenant, the department will no longer have this option for these classes and will need to look into other arrangements. No motion was made on this item at this time. Review request for dog park improvements. The city received an inquiry asking the city to consider installing water lines to the dog park, providing manufactured doggy bags for cleaning up after pets, and impose a user fee to pay for the improvements. Chad Harth reported that all three items were discussed with the citizens committee when the dog park was developed. The cost of running a drinking water main line was very expensive, and at the time the citizens committee felt it was reasonable to expect owners to bring water for their dogs. The committee also wanted to encourage recycling, recycling of plastic bags from store purchases and creating some bag holders for users to bring their bags to the dog park for picking up after pets. The citizens committee also recommended to have improvements financed by donations instead of a user fee at the time, so staff of the police department wouldn't have to validate membership fees on a constant basis. No motion was made on this item at this time. Directors' remember, remember report included in the packet agenda and viewed by the committee. Service anniversary reports. Mike Buckman, park caretaker, completed nine years of service on May 4th. Ted Christian, facility superintendent, completed five years of service on May 11th. Carl Dinahar, park laborer and more, completed two years of service on May 14th. Steve Thompson, facility laborer, completed four years of service on May 17th. Gordon Gabrielson, park caretaker, completed six years of service on May 20th. Don Reinhardt, facility custodian, completed seven years of service on May 21st. Garrett Garvins, wastewater treatment operator, completed six years of service on May 30th. Jim Thorpe, facility technician, completed eight years of service on May 30th.
Eighteen.
Chairman's report, there was none presented. Committee members' report, none presented. Future item, future agenda items, Riverside Park boat launch with security cameras and machine, ticket machines will be discussed at the next meeting. Motion was adjourned at 5:20. I would ask council to recommend, review and recommend to council changes to New London COVID-19 recreational facility programs and special events reopening plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Lori Dean. To approve and update recreational facility reopening plan and cancel all special events through July 15th, 2020. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes ten zero.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. No planning commission minutes, we'll move on to Economic Development Committee. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, May 26th at 4:30 p.m. in the New London City Council chambers and via Zoom. The April 28th minutes were approved. April Kapitsky presented a rough draft of a grant proposal for the city's small businesses. She cited proposed criteria for applicants and the funds available for the facade grant program. The amount each business could apply for was discussed, as well as how long to leave applications open. Also discussed was awarding the money on first come, first served basis or other basis. Motion by O'Connell, second by Asman, to go ahead with a city business grant. The approval criteria was discussed, motion carried with all eyes, and that then went to the finance committee. Motion by Morak, second by Zog, to reconsider the negotiations for an agreement on developing the riverfront property. Motion carried with all eyes. Mark explained how this project was developed and how we got here. He stated the project needs a project manager as the city does not have staff that is trained for those duties. An amended motion by O'Connell, second by Zog, to continue efforts at negotiating a contract to move forward with the riverfront property. Discussion regarding some ideas on how to approach the contract were presented by Hans Thompson. He felt the city needs to identify its needs and what its end result should look like. A subcommittee was formed to handle the development of the contract. Members included Mayor Herter, Hans Thompson, Fache, Dorsey, and Morak. They will meet on Thursday to start discussions. Asman called for a vote and carried with all yes votes. April Kapitsky gave her business update. Her report showed the percent of businesses that are open, percent partially open, and percent that were closed due to the COVID-19 virus. Unemployment in Wapaka County in April was 18.9%. Mark recommended to council, that council approve April Kapitsky serving as interim economic development director, receiving a per diem and mileage for meetings attended. Next month's meeting will have Dave Thiel as the invited guest. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 5:47 p.m. Then there is also in your packet, subcommittee meetings for May 18th and June 2nd, the end result being that we recommend an approval of a contract with Todd Hutchinson that we will discuss in item four. Item three, I think was already covered, and item five, basically was hiring April Kapitsky to attend meetings for economic development for the city with payment of the $30 per diem and mileage, and therefore I recommend we move on to item number four. So I move that we approve a contract with Todd Hutchinson to provide services to advance the riverfront development project.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog. Any further discussion?
I think so. Does that just cover that project over here, not the whole?
Yes.
Park anymore?
Just the riverfront.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Motion passes ten zero.
And you have the WC, ADC monthly report in your packet, and that's all I have for economic development.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. Cemetery committee, there was no May meeting. For minutes and reports for the Housing Authority, Library Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Tourism, Utility, and Building Inspector, you guys should all have them in your packets. Motion to accept. Or any additions or comments to that one, I guess. None with none, we'll move on to report of officers and recent events and announcements to the public. I'll start off, I have one for the Cemetery Commission to appoint Lori Shaw to the Cemetery Commission. I'd also like to take note that all of you should have in front of you, thank you letter from the New London Historical Society for the Poppy Proclamation. And that's all I have at this time. We'll move on to the utility manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna turn the monthly report over to Jason to do that, and when he's done, I'd like to close.
Evening, Your Honor. Utility agenda, we have continued construction on well number eight. Water crews have been working on installing a driveway and landscaping. Electric crews have been installing poles. They've completed 60 of the 200 that were required to do. They've also been filling in with LED light replacements. They've done 17 more. Totalling 449. Our goal for the end of the year is to complete at least 475. I looked into billing last year, May's bill, and this year's May's bill, because we've done 449, the savings to the city is $1,100 for that month, so it's definitely paying off doing those replacements. We also have a new face at the utility. We've hired Kyle Stewart. He is from Hortonville. He began on May 26th replacing Wyatt Maraz. He had left to go to warmer weather. Kyle is also completed a nine-month course at N W T C, and he will begin his apprenticeship with us, so we're extremely happy to have him. The utility commission has decided to keep the lobby closed at this time. I know that COVID-19 is ever-changing. We've decided to keep that closed until we can do deferred payments for our non-payment customers, so we're revisiting that at every commission meeting once we see that we can reopen our lobby. I know a lot of the customers like to come in and pay their bill, so we've decided to keep that closed until further notice, I guess. And that's all I have for the, for this evening.
Your Honor, I'd like to take a moment to thank the council and city staff for the support I've received over the last 35 years being your utility manager. Again, thank you very much for all the support by the council for utility projects, helping us move things forward in the city and working with the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. On behalf of the city, I'd like to thank you for your service to the utilities and your service to the city of New London.
Thank you.
Hope you have a happy retirement.
Looking forward to it.
Move on to Director of Public Services.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, down at the New London Aquatics and Fitness Center, we are now open for adult swim and use of the weight room, but for the time being, due to the COVID-19 situation, we are following guidelines from the CDC and the Department Health Services, so we're limiting the amount of individuals that are coming into the facility and using different aspects of it. So we are open, but please call the aquatics and fitness center first, just kind of schedule your time, because we're scheduling lane lines and use of the weight room. You can call the staff down at the pool at 982-8524 for more information and get scheduled for your time. Registration is also open for camp hat and services for the summer. Individuals can register online or calling our office if you have questions. 982-8521 for more information there. Had a recent conversation with the developers for the London Acres site, that's the site west of the high school. They will be picking up some action again. They will be working on installing the road base and site grading in the next few months, and I've been told that the developer anticipates the base layer of asphalt should be installed sometime this fall. A few weeks ago, we received our new skid steer stump grinder setup. With that, we're gonna be starting to grind out the stumps from all the trees we took down in the last year. From the storm and just with our normal process, we have about 300 stumps between the streets and all the parks that we have, so it's gonna take some time, and getting that new grinder is really gonna help that. So if you have a stump that's in front of your terrace for the last nine months, I thank you for being patient. We just got the machine now, but we're gonna be starting to work on that process pretty quick. And then for those of you who drive on High Street and Industrial Loop Road and cross the railroad tracks on those roads, we're teaming up with Canadian National to improve those crossings. I have not had a timeline yet, told me from Canadian National, because we gotta work with their staff, but once I have that, we'll be notifying the public, putting it on Facebook, especially all the businesses down in that area, so they can figure out, you know, the transportation and the deliveries of their trucks and stuff. So there will be detours set up when we do the High Street closing. Everybody will have to go on Industrial Loop Road, and then when we work on Industrial Loop Road, everybody will have to go on High Street for the detours, but we'll get that information out as soon as I hear back for some timelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Chief Slater.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two anniversaries, Jeremy Mulroy, six years, and Ben Schmidt, 14 years. Then I also just want to touch base with everyone, there's quite a bit of stuff going on in the world nowadays involving law enforcement also, and I just wanted to assure everyone here because that we're gonna keep up to date on our policies, procedures, use of force, all that. Our insurance company through Sivmec last week had offered a opportunity for us to send our policies in to be reviewed by them. On Friday, I sent those in, all the required ones by the state, which includes our use of force, our pursuit policies, there's quite a few other ones, but I just want to assure everyone at the council that we are gonna keep up to date on that. Our officers are well-trained, in the state of Wisconsin, they're well-trained. I think the, I would like everyone to remember that the training standards for the state of Wisconsin is not the same as it is for every state, and that we are usually held pretty high on the pedestal there for that, so we will do our best. If anyone ever has any questions or anything that I can answer for them, please give me a call at the police department or shoot me an email, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you about our policies and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by O'Connell, seconded by Dean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.